The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Westminster City Council meeting of April 12. Before we start the meeting, I need to give you a short update. As of April 12, Westminster City Council is meeting in person for city council meetings, with the option for virtual participation by council and staff as necessary. In-person public participation is not yet available. The community may participate by watching the live stream on the City YouTube channel or by dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. We continue to support multiple opportunities for public comment, including email, voicemail, live audio. Many modifications have been made to council chambers for the safety of council and staff. This includes spacing council on the dais and limiting the number of staff participating in person. When the public is invited back to City Hall for in-person public meetings, there will be limitations and new protocols to ensure the safety of participants and compliance with public health orders. Remote participation will continue to be available for the convenience of the community. The Agenda section of the City website is the best place to check for details on participating in council meetings. The web address is www.cityofwestminster.us/Agendas. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would ask you please to join us in the placement allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Parker, if you would, please take your role.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Councillor Demont.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Here.
Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Here.
And Councillor Bowles.
Here.
Thank you, council. The first item on the agenda tonight for business is item 3A. This is a request for a meeting of minutes approval for the March 20, 2021, 2022, March 22, 2021 meeting. Councillor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the March 22, 2021 meeting as presented.
Councillor Demont.
Second.
I have a motion to second all those in favor, so you can buy by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, hearing none, the motion is carried. Moving on to the first item under item 4A. This is a proclamation for the City of Westminster Volunteer Week in celebration of National Volunteer Week. At this time, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world, whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations. Whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. Whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. Whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems. Whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I hereby bachelor Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18 through the 24, 2021, City of Westminster National Volunteer Week. It urges my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognized as those who serve, we can come together to make a difference. Signed, this 12th day of April, 2021, Herb Atchison, Mayor. Our next item of business is also a proclamation. That will be done by Mayor Protem Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just ask protocol? Am I supposed to leave my mask up or down? I'm not sure. Whatever is comfortable, okay. So I have the absolute pleasure of making a proclamation for National Arbor Day. And I would ask that our city forester, John Kaza, please join me. Mr. Kaza, thank you so much. So I'm going to just real quick, give a little background information on Arbor Day. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton, the editor of Nebraska's first newspaper, proposed a tree planting holiday to be called Arbor Day. Since that time, Arbor Day celebrations have spread to every state in the nation and to many foreign countries. The Tree City USA Award is sponsored by the National Arbor Day Foundation and recognizes towns and cities across America that meet the standard of the Tree City USA program. This program is designed to recognize those communities that effectively manage their public tree resources and to encourage the implementation of community tree management based on four Tree City USA program elements. One, a tree board or department. The city board consists of John Kaza, our city forester, who is on here with me tonight; Joe Real, our open space superintendent; Rod Larson, our open space manager; and Jason Gang, director of Parks, Recs, and Libraries. Two, that you have a community tree ordinance, which we do. A community forest program, the third criteria, is a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita. Westminster's community forestry budget, as comparison, in 2020 was $6.51 per capita. And four, an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. Trees are wonderful. They add to our quality of life. They provide shade to us. They soak up carbon dioxide, but they also make people love this community. We just had a strategic plan retreat. And by far, with multiple different surveys and environmental scans, the word people used to describe Westminster was beautiful, and that is no small part due to John Kaza's work. I'd like to turn over the microphone to him to talk a little bit more about his department, his work, and these awards, or these, yeah, the award and the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and the mayor and the councillors. It's an honor to be here tonight. And of course, with COVID, we didn't have the state force service person here to help present this. But Westminster has now earned, this is the 36th consecutive year Westminster has earned the Tree City Award. And it's also the 20th year that we have earned the Growth Award. And to earn the Growth Award, you have to do some extra things besides the four things that were listed by the Mayor Protem. What we did to earn those, we do have a comprehensive tree debris recycling program. We also have a continuing education of our staff. Westminster has five staff members that are certified arborists with the International Society of Arbor Culture. And then also, as a particular interest, perhaps to councillor Scully, Westminster is participating with the Front Range Community College in the arborist apprenticeship. Program. And it's a cooperative program that is helping to bring young apprentices into the profession. And they do some of the classes at the Front Range Community College. And then we have, and we provide the locations and the trees for them to practice in. We do have some scheduled events happening for Arbor Day. And we also had to reduce these because of the COVID thing. But we do also, we currently have a tree sale happening now. It's a relief. It's Westy Tree Sale. And we still have some trees for sale. You can find those online and you can purchase those online. The sale will be ending this week on Wednesday. And on Saturday, this Saturday, April 17, is when those trees have, the people that purchase them will have to pick them up. The other thing we have, we are helping participate in the great global cleanup that's taking place here in April 22 through the 30. And we have some trees that we are donated to as a raffle for those people that are helping to participate in that. And the final thing we have is that we have an interactive map, which will be going on the website. We don't have it quite there yet. It's close. It is the heritage tree map of the largest trees of different species in the city. And the purpose of that is to encourage people to get out and to get to know the trees we have in Westminster. And with that, I will thank you for this. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you, John. I'm not going to ask, I'm going to ask you to keep your camera on for just a moment. I've been on City Council just seven years, and I've had the privilege of providing this proclamation in the past and giving this award. But only being here seven years, I do know that your name is synonymous with both stewardship and celebration of our tree canopy and to this community. And it's with a heavy heart that I'm going to let people know that we, after 25, more than 25 years of service to this community, John has decided to retire, to spend some more time with his beautiful family that I had the privilege of meeting when giving him a Year of Service Award. But have left a legacy that our entire community enjoys. So thank you for your service. I will read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day called Arbor Day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Westminster has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 17, 2021, Arbor Day in the City of Westminster, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and to support our city's urban forestry program, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Signed this 12th day of April, 2021. Thank you so much, John, for your work.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Moving on to our next item. Councillor Demont has a proclamation regarding Child Abuse Prevention Month. Councillor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some quick stats that I'm going to read to you before we get to the proclamation. The child abuse and neglect is a serious problem worldwide that knows no geographical boundaries. And the statistics are currently, one in seven girls and one in 25 boys will be sexually abused before their 18th birthday. So you can see that this is a serious problem that our society and world definitely needs to address. We do this proclamation every April because this is Child Abuse Prevention Month, as the mayor said. And then I want to highlight a couple of groups real quick that are out there fighting for justice for these kids. So Ralston House Professionals work with Police Department, Social Services, and District Attorneys in the 1st and 17th Judicial Districts to provide forensic interviews, forensic sexual assault, medical exams, and supportive services to children, teens, that have been suspected of being sexually or physically abused. I know that this is a group that the city partners with and has for a long time. Our own Mayor Protem sits on their board. My wife used to sit on their board, as well as our city manager, Don Tripp, sits on their board. And so it's a group that we definitely partner with, both as a city, but our police department uses those services, and our neighboring districts. And then another group that I want to highlight is CASA. So CASA is a volunteer-based nonprofit organization that trains and supervises community volunteers to represent best interests of our most vulnerable citizens, child victims of physical, sexual, or emotional abuse and neglect. CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties currently serve approximately 500 of the 1,600 children in need in Adams and Broomfield County. And in this group, our own council member, Smith, is actually a CASA to a child. So this is another group that the city has partnered with and supported over the years. It's my honor to be able to recognize these groups as they pride themselves in getting justice for children and making sure their voices are heard and stamping out this horrible, what I would consider a pandemic that's been going on for a very long time and needs to be dealt with. And with that, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free of harm and fear, whereas all children do not receive appropriate care, in fact, too many children become victims of the hand of abusive perpetrators, and whereas every responsible person would agree that even one abused child is too many, and it is up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end the abuse of children through awareness and action. Whereas Westminster has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and help parents obtain assistance they need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention and advocacy programs such as Ralston House and CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of Westminster City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and urge all residents, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses to work collaboratively to increase their efforts to support families and prevent child abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, council. And congratulations to each of the groups that we're recognizing that for all the hard work they've done. Moving on to our next item is a public comment. Ms. Parker, I understand we have two people who are going to be speaking live.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two people who signed up to speak live at the meeting this evening. There were no voicemails, and there were two emails that were received by the deadline and have been posted to the online agenda, and were also previously forwarded to the City Council after the deadline. The two speakers that we have to speak live this evening are Tammy Reiki and State Representative Shannon Bird. Ms. Reiki had been on the meeting, but it appears she may have lost her connection. So at this time, I'm going to unmute State Representative Shannon Bird, and we will continue to monitor, to see if our other speaker has joined the meeting, and we'll continue to monitor our voicemail in case she opts to leave us a voicemail instead. So State Representative Shannon Bird, you are now unmuted.
All right, Ms. Bird, just before you do start, remind her that this public comment period is limited to five minutes. I have a timer that will run, and I will let you know when you have one minute left.
Great. Thank you, City Council. I am really here just to listen and keep up to date with what's going on in our city. I did want to hop on and let constituents know that I'll be hosting my next town hall on April 24. I did just have a town hall this past Saturday. So you can reach out to my office. My email is repbird, R-E-P-B-I-R-D, 35@gmail.com. And for any interested Westminster residents, you can reach out to me, and I'm happy to make sure you get on my email list. For anyone who isn't aware, I used to serve as part of this body. I was a member of Westminster City Council from, let's see, November 2015 until the end of 2018. I miss you all and am so grateful for all of your service, and really want citizens to understand how important it is that we maintain a connection between our legislators and our city staffs and city council. This group has been integral to informing the way that I think about state pension policy, local control on environmental issues, some of the other things that I have been writing down, transportation, so many things, law enforcement, criminal justice, all of these things. So we are so well-represented, have incredible staff, and everyone has been very, very helpful to me. Just for, by way of background, a lot of the work that we're doing now in the legislative session is moving into budget. Happily, I will report out that our economy is doing better than we thought it was going to be doing. About this time last year, with the pandemic sitting in, we really thought that state revenues were going to plummet as our economy really was slowing down. People were going into shutdown mode to prevent the spread of a deadly virus, rather, and transactions were slowing down. Not much was happening by way of economic activity. Much has been restored since that time, which is great news for so many of us. And as a result, projections for revenue coming back into the state are much better than we thought they were going to be. This is good news for everybody, as we all depend upon the work that the state does for all of us. Our roads, access to healthcare, high-quality education, affordable higher education, all depend upon a strong economy, which seems to be coming back in robust fashion. I invite council members and citizens to reach out with their concerns and priorities, ideas they would like to see. ideas they would like to see expressed in our budget. Reach out to me in the email I just listed out. And I'm just checking my notes to see if there's anything else I want to make sure I mention out to you. I think that's it. But just again, a big shout out to the work of our council members and our city staff. Really, the City of Westminster is the incredible place that it is because of the hard work of all of you. And I want you to know, I see you all, and I appreciate what you do every day. And that's all for my testimony this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Ms. Parker, can we regain?
No, Mr. Mayor. At this time, our second speaker has not joined the meeting, but we'll continue to monitor, and I'll let you know if we reconnect with her.
All right. Thank you. Council, we'll move on to the next item. This will be a report of city officials. Mr. Tripp?
Mr. Mayor, Atchison, Mayor pro tem, members of the City Council, I'm delighted to be here this evening, back into this beautiful City Council chambers, and to be here with all of you this evening. I'd like to, first of all, just recognize John Kozin just for a second. I had the privilege to serve as Parks Recreation Libraries Director when I first moved to the community, and John is an iconic figure in our history, and I just wish him the best in retirement. If I could, I'd like to have, Matt, if you'd please bring up a presentation I'd like to share with council this evening. Mayor and council, it was approximately 13 months ago when we had our last city council meeting here. That was March 16th of 2020. We've been out since then, and so after this year, I'd like to kind of recognize the time that we've had. I want to, first of all, of course, you know, tell everybody in our community how sad we are about the impacts of COVID-19 in our city, and many of you lost loved ones and have had folks impacted in a negative way, both with their own personal health and also economically in our city. And I just want you to know, your city is with you and has done what we can to try to lessen the burden on all of us. I want to tell you, though, how proud I am of the work done by this council and our staff to respond to this epidemic. Next slide, please. The swift action by the council and staff maximized our ability to respond to the needs of our community during this time. I'd like to report that nearly $13 million was spent to provide support to members of our community. We were able to fully utilize every single dollar of the 8.98 million of federal carers' funding that came available to us, and dipped into the city's reserves to provide support before any other community did in our business community, to make sure they could make that rent payment in April. We have achieved a continuity of service for local government, been able to continue with most all of the operations, important services to our city. We've balanced our spending. We balanced our budget in 2020. We go into 2021 with a balanced budget as well, even though there have been reduced revenues. We supported our businesses and community through numerous programs, and we are very proud of the fact that we did not lay staff off, did not furlough staff. We repurposed those staff for other types of activities in our city that served, I believe, our community very well, and kept those folks employed during this tough time. Next slide, please. I'd like to highlight efforts taken by staff in this council over the past year. The information will be organized into six areas. The first of those areas, next slide, will be the COVID-19 response and our emergency operations. On the day of the first reported case in Westminster, staff immediately stood up an emergency operations center, and a state of emergency was declared by myself. We immediately formed a policy group to guide the EOC, and later, long-term recovery operations transitioned our EOC to the long-term recovery operations group within our workforce. COVID-19 testing at Fire Station Number One for Fire, Police, and Public Works, and all utility employees began. We opened a rapid testing site, one of the first in the front range in the MAC parking lot, and then operated from July through December, with a focus on serving the uninsured and those experiencing homelessness. I'm really proud that we specifically dedicated some resources to making sure that those that were the most marginalized during this time had the supportive testing. Thank you to the Parking Recreation Libraries staff for repurposing to provide that support. We opened a regional COVID-19 testing site for the community in the Fat Cat's parking lot at the Westminster Promenade, and that has continued to be open. Next slide. Many things, many changes were made to our facilities, and of course, we see the benefit of that tonight, allowing us to come back into these chambers and have a council meeting, our courtrooms with, at the municipal courthouse, with flexiglass barriers, video conferencing, and all the technology related to providing a safe and a communicative opportunity for people to continue to connect with their local government. We added needlepoint ionization and airborne pathogen and contaminant reduction technology that's actually working in this building today, and will make this a safer-than-p previous experience when we're able to come back with all of our community members coming to our meetings. Staff implemented many new cleaning protocols, as many of the community did. We were one of the first cities in the front range to take on this issue of masking back in May, and I think that has played well out for us as a city. Next slide. A good deal of time was spent with community and engagement. There were weekly updates, multiple livestream webinars in the workplace. We had 18 livestream webinars for employees to make sure they were informed as to the policies of the city. We had over 10 million impressions on our COVID-19 messaging alone, through print, digital, and telephone call contact. The reach of our messaging was a 39% increase, and our overall engagement, a 26% increase when you look at the difference between March 20 and March 21. Parks Rec Libraries Department, again, repurposing employees, started a program that was, we titled the Public Health Ambassador Program, which provided information to neighborhoods and to the highest areas of our city that had COVID-19 high reporting rates. We went out into the business community to make sure they had information about how to continue their businesses. We had over 50 city council meetings, study sessions, special council meetings, and special council study sessions, which were conducted virtually, with not one single glitch. Well, maybe one. Thank you for your patience of the public and the city council, and thank you for your resilience, information technology, and other staff, including the city clerk's office and all who made this all happen. I like to call it magic, because I think it was really magic that made all this come together. Thank you very much. Next slide. Our business assistance program is remarkable. We gave nearly $3.6 million in business grants to community small businesses that were really struggling during a time that, you know, we were able, I believe, to help many of them stay open. And for those that have suffered and even had to close your businesses, our thoughts are with you, and we'll do whatever we can moving forward to make sure that you have great employment in our city, and we can do what we, we'll do whatever we can to get you back on your feet. We distributed 30,000 face coverings to 164 businesses. You know, I'm giving you a lot of data here today, and I won't go through all of it. Just so much information here. We'll have this information on our website. But suffice it to say, we're just, we just went through everything. We turned every stone over we could to try to make this as painless as possible to our community. Our community's social recovery program provided housing assistance to folks, $625,000 through partnerships with Maker Housing, the Foothills Regional Housing folks on the Jefferson County side, and an additional $220,000 in assistance to Growing Home, the Human Services Board, Council, and the Westminster Legacy Foundation. Thank you for your support in doing that. There were more than 10,000 meals delivered to Westminster seniors, and 10,000 boxes of food that were distributed at City Park Recreation Center. And I believe 72% of those folks that picked boxes of food up were unemployed. So we really got to the people who needed this help. And of course, we modified recreation library programming. Our Parks and Rec and Libraries people would tell you that those are important, those are important opportunities for folks. People using our open space system in our parks was unprecedented. And of course, we got back into our libraries, and we provided some virtual opportunities at this point. Many, many changes to technology. We continued to do building inspections. In fact, when our building inspectors couldn't go inside of our rental properties in order to provide rental housing inspections, they shifted their responsibilities to catch up with a backlog of housing inspections, roofing inspections, we had from the tremendous hail events that we had in the previous three years. So I'm really, really proud of the work that all those folks did. That's a summary of all of the work that was done this year. I want you to take a look at the website, people who are listening, and you can read a lot more than I gave you today. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this today. I want to thank our city employees. This was a rough year for them. I'll tell you, I heard along the way, you know, all these city workers, and many of them not able to work, and were they able to stay busy? I'm just going to tell you, from my viewpoint, being in work like this for over 40 years, I think our productivity in this organization was probably up 20% during this time. People really sacrificed, and unfortunately, they didn't disconnect maybe as often as they should have. I know for the first 100 days or so of this event, back to March 16th or so, that we had many, many people who worked without a day off. So thank you, as with many workforces in our community, for what you did to work through this. Thank you for council for working together so well to help us and support us in every way that we needed it. And it's not over yet. Wear your mask, wash your hands, socially distance. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to provide this update.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Council, before I come to you for your comments, we're going to go back to our second scheduled speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, it appears that our scheduled speaker, Tammy Reiki, has joined us. I'm going to unmute you, and you may begin your public comment at this time.
Ms. Reiki, just a reminder, you have five minutes, and I will let you know when you have reached four, so that you can start to wrap up. So please go ahead and start.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties earlier. I also wanted to take a moment to thank you all for serving on the Westminster Council. As I look briefly at the Westminster website, it seems like this commitment costs each of you guys several hours of your personal time each week, so thank you very much. I love that this time it's called testimony, and I'm here to testify that the Lord Jesus Christ is real and alive. I invited Him into my heart three and a half years ago, and I'm thrilled to have a lot of testimony to support my claim. I grew up attending church each Sunday, but I don't remember anyone from church sharing any testimony on how God was working through them or in their life. As I opened up to the idea that God cared about me individually and was actively working in my life, I looked for anything that would confirm that God was answering my prayers in even the smallest ways. As I thanked Him for these small blessings, I started receiving small nuggets of wisdom. Within a couple of days of receiving a nugget of wisdom, I would hear a podcast or a sermon that would confirm the message I had received. In the past, I would have written these off as coincidences, but the Israelites knew God had His hand even in the casting of lots. As my trust grew, I began to say and do things that were totally contrary for my normal thinking and behavior. The past three and a half years have been filled with hardships mixed in, with a lot of love, encouragement, and joy. My closest relationships three and a half years ago were with people I lived with, but we were all living separate lives. Today, we are enjoying one another's company, sharing feelings, and supporting one another. God is good. He loves families, and He loves everyone listening. I realize that this is a city council meeting, not a church conference, and I believe in the separation of church and state. Unfortunately, I think there's a huge misunderstanding of what that means. God is involved with the church and with the state. Therefore, I'm calling on all believers in Westminster to meditate on Second Chronicles 7:14. If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin and heal their land. Heavenly Father, you are the Creator of heaven and earth. You have knitted each of us in our mother's womb and knoweth personally. You are holy and need nothing from us, and yet you call us yours. I stand with other Westminster believers tonight in declaring that Westminster, Colorado is part of the Lord's kingdom, and we intercede on behalf of residents who have rejected God, on behalf of residents who have worshiped people and things above God, on behalf of all residents who have trusted their own understanding and their own power, and on behalf of Westminster believers who have forgot or never trusted that you, God, are powerful, and you are our provider, and you are the one we serve. Cover us all with the blood of Jesus Christ. Give them sight to you and your glory. May the plans that you have written for this city and its residents be filled on earth as it is written in heaven. Father, you have either appointed or allowed Mr. Atchison, Ms. Seid, Mr. DeMonte, Mr. Seymour, Ms. Gully, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Bullis to be our representatives of the people of Westminster. We especially lift each of them to you. Only you know their hearts. If they have already invited you into their heart, draw them deeper into you. If they do not know you, Lord, give them a sign that they will recognize. As the mayor, council members, and city manager work tonight, may they be aware of your will for them and for the city. May Westminster be a city on a hill, shining your glory for all to see, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. And thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Parker, we'll go back to council comments at this point. Council, if anyone has any comments they'd like to make at this point, please go back into your register. Best of letting me know, and remember, we're not using the chat piece tonight. Ms. Gully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had a very busy week and have a few reports. Had an opportunity to attend a lot of meetings. The first meeting that I was privileged to attend was with U.S. Congressman Ed Perlmutter, and our mayor, Atchison, was also in attendance at this meeting. They talked about the American Rescue Plan and went into a lot of detail about the money that would be coming into the state, that would help the, would be something that the cities would have access to and would be able to use toward our resilience and recovery of our community. There's approximately $1.8 trillion coming into the state, and there are many things they're going to try to put it toward, including expanding unemployment benefits, expanding family benefits, expanding county benefits, working on vaccine and testing. There's emergency rental assistance, infrastructure, school programs. I'm looking through my notes. I'm trying to go kind of fast. Lot of good projects. So keep your eyes on the news, because there's a lot of articles about it. I've been watching a lot of articles about it, reading a lot of articles about it. It's very important information, and this is really going to help our economy get back on its feet. And then the next meeting I was privileged to attend, oh, forgot, almost forgot, had the great privilege of attending the roast of Frank D'Angelo's at the Rotary 710 and CASA event. It was very, very interesting and very good information. Frank D'Angelo's sounds like a tremendous man. I don't know that I've ever had the direct privilege of meeting him, and unfortunately, I was remote, but he is truly a hero, and that was really neat to be invited to that. So thank you. I know Rich Seymour had a lot to do with that, so thank you, sir. And then I also had the opportunity to attend the Parks Recreation Library Open Space Meeting this week. They covered a tremendous amount of information, and I struggled to actually stay caught up with them, but they talked about the eaglets. Out at Stanley Lake, we have two baby eaglets born last week, seem to be thriving and doing well. Also, they talked about vaccines and the trailer program. They talked about the MAC and the food distribution for, in partnership with Growing Home. 152,000 pounds of food has been distributed, which is truly amazing. They talked a lot about DEI work, diversity, equity, inclusivity work, and many of our inclusivity board members were also in attendance. Talked about a mobile art studio trailer, social recovery, and if you've seen the big black pipes in City Park, those are to replace our sewer interceptors. So the trail is kind of under work right now, and the pond is fenced off, but that will be coming to an end soon as we get those pipes in the ground. And then, oh my goodness. From there, we did the strategic planning meeting over the weekend. Want to thank my fellow counselors for all your great work and your camaraderie. It was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed it. I think strategic planning is one of my favorite activities. I think strategic planning is one of my favorite activities. I love to work on what is the vision and future of our city. So great time. Today, we had the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport meeting this morning and today we heard from the airport itself as well as a private contractor who had done a noise study. And there were some proposals made about different directions that we might be able to go with bringing planes in and out of the airport that would not affect our residents as much. That takes a great deal of work and time with FAA. So I don't know that we'll see an immediate ability to correct that problem, but I think it gives us options. I hope the residents know, I know this is a very, very slow process and it is disappointing how slow it is, but there is a lot to be investigated, learned, and talked about and we are moving as fast as we possibly can. Today, I moved to make sure that we hear more residents' ideas and solutions. Many of residents have come up with some good ideas. Thursday, the council had an opportunity to meet with HD 29 Representative Lindsay Doherty and talk about important legislation that is happening at our state. And then also, I am still working on the diaper drive. I was able to collect $600 worth of diapers in this last month. We've extended it to April 30th. So if anybody would like to donate diapers, I am taking donations at my home. Feel free to email me and I will give you opportunity to drop those off at my home. Anybody who donates, I will match your donation. And then I wanted to talk, I wanted to address John Casa. Did I say that right? Yes. And I wanted to thank him. Gosh, such a contribution to our city and that's the second P R L O S person we've lost in a matter of a month due to retirement, but great contribution. I really want to thank him for mentioning the Arborist Apprenticeship from Front Range Community College. This was a really big lift from the college. It was one of our first apprenticeships, so we were very new at how to do it, but we have been very successful. We've had over 30 people go through the process of the apprenticeships. Education with the college through the non-credit side and applied 12 credits toward our horticulture degree on the four-credit side, giving them an advantage and accessibility to higher education. So really great thing. And then also, Front Range Community College reported that 2,800 vaccinations were distributed last week. I just can't even get over that number and I think they might have been a little shocked too. So great, great week, so busy. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Counselor Scully for highlighting this last week's Westminster 710 Rotary and CASA roast. It was an honor to meet with Frank DeAngelis and I had the privilege of being there in person and so it was a fabulous evening and I want to thank all those who attended and, for those who contributed to a great cause. Appreciate that very much. I wanted to talk about this evening's meetings as, as my colleagues will attest, I have been a bit diligent in trying to find a way for us to get back in person. And I want to thank very much every staff member who has helped us through the remote city manager's office and the IT people who have, you know, put this together. Of course, with no glitches, as Don said, I, you caught me off guard there for a moment, but it's, it's been a great learning process to keep us connected remotely. But as we learned this weekend, as Counselor Scully mentioned, we spent Saturday and a good part of Sunday meeting in person to talk about our strategic plan and I know we found in 3D is better than 2D, 2D, and it's a great, it's a much better way to govern. Now, I look forward soon to be able to look out straight and have, since we don't have cardboard cutouts here to, to see the people who, who attend, but I'm also thanked my colleagues for the great discussion we had on March 29th and, and the input that we had from city staff about the lessons that we've learned from the pandemic that, that are positive that we can go forward with being open and transparent, having people continue to call in remotely and for those people who can't make it out on a Monday night, it's, it's going to be a great way for them to stay in connection with council. So I, I look forward with a great deal of optimism and glee for the next few months as we move forward. Thank you very much to my colleagues and Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and city manager's office, too.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the rest of my colleagues, they'll pile on. Three days in a row that we've got to spend with each other after not being able to meet in person for an entire year. So I guess we missed each other. It has been good though. It was a good weekend. I enjoyed our strategic planning. Thanks to Don and his staff for making that happen for us, specifically the IT department and Cody. I being an IT person, I always have to give credit to IT first, sorry Cody, but it's been, it's been good. I also attended the roast of Frank DeAngelis. I actually have had the pleasure of meeting Frank. Those who have followed my political career, colleagues, started with Jessica Ridgway. One of the first meetings I ever had with city officials and school officials, Frank was actually there and he was there because he wanted to lend his experience of a traumatized community to our community. So he's a great man. I'm honored that I've got to know him, honored that Counselor Seymour invited me to be one of his guests virtually for the roast. The 710 group is a great group. I used to be a member of that club. I thank them for what they do for the community. As well, the timing of it is good because one of the recipients of money from that event, also CASA that we run. So I didn't want that to go without me. The last thing that I'll share, besides thank you for everybody who's tuning in and those who called in tonight, Representative Byrd, we appreciate hearing from you. This week is the inclusivity board, which I'm the liaison to. You can join us at 6 o'clock on Wednesday night. If you want to find out more information, you can go cityofwestminster.us under government and boards and commissions and you can find out more details on any of the boards and commissions, including the inclusivity board, which again, this one's a date.
Counselor Vol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to join my colleagues in thanking everyone who made our strategic plan retreat a success. We had city manager's office and everyone else who helped with that. And city manager, Don Tripp, was there for the entire time. I thank him for his service of being there with us. And we also had our city attorney, David Frankel, there and I really thank him for being there as well and keeping us out of trouble and, and having some great suggestions too, so. And then tonight, I want to thank the entire city hall team, led by our city clerk, Michelle Parker, for the great work and this couldn't be an easy task and we all know that. So thank you all for your work and that's, I then finally, I want to thank Representative Byrd for joining our meeting tonight, giving us some updates on the budget. She is such a great partner for our local government here down at the state capitol. So I want to thank her for being, participating. That's it for tonight. Thank you. I look forward to a good meeting.
For Pro Tem.
It is great to be here tonight with all of my colleagues in person. I want to start by acknowledging the proclamations that we made today. Westminster is a city that benefits from a strong amount of community affinity and, and love through the work of our volunteers. It not only saves our money, saves the city money in our budget, but it, it is infectious when you see people giving back to the community. It sets the standard. So thank you to all of those who give their times and talents to Westminster. I also want to thank John Casa again. Trees are such an important part of this community and the work that they have done to make sure we have diverse species so we don't see blight from, from one species attacking our entire canopy. Just the level of care and professionalism and expertise is not, is not known by a child that looks up at a tree or climbs a tree, but it's felt by everyone who lives here. Then I also wanted to mention Child Abuse Prevention Month and thank Counselor Demont for the proclamation. It was actually his wife who recommended that I look into serving on the Ralston House Board. As a community leader, I strive to bring voice to the voiceless and Ralston House and CASA work to make sure that children's voices are heard, that they have a safe place to tell their truth. And I think their partnership with our police department leads to a safer community, to justice and to dignity. I want to thank those who called in tonight to have their voices heard. Thank you so much, Representative Byrd and community member, Ranky, for calling in and thank you to those who wrote the emails as well. Dina Valente and I cannot remember the gentleman who wrote about affordable housing's name, but we really do appreciate receiving your input. City manager, Don Tripp, gave us a presentation on the aggregate work that was done by this organization in response to COVID. And even though we know this and we get a COVID report every single week, I was overwhelmed at the responsiveness, the nimbleness of this organization to turn direction, to meet the needs of the community and to be so darn effective doing it. Tonight's just one more example of that nimbleness and a huge thank you to city clerk, Michelle Parker, to Brian Grossman, to our IT department, to Matt and Jody, who've helped us along the way and are, are holding our hands tonight. It really is fulfilling to work with such a high-functioning team. Last week was a busy week and I'll be brief. The CML Policy Committee had a special meeting with the governor's office and the sponsors of the transportation legislation. That bill has not dropped yet, but it's an important bill. We saw in our own citizen survey, a microcosm of issues across the state, that people are really concerned about mobility, transportation, transit, and the condition of our roads. This bill offers a potential way to, to go forward. It has not been drafted, so details will be important for all of us to see, but it was a wonderful opportunity that the Colorado Municipal League had to let kind of local government be at the table, hearing about the bill, expressing their concerns and their needs. That same day, we had a meeting with CML, the Colorado Municipal League, and the counties with the two U.S. senators for Colorado, Hickenlooper and Bennett, going over the America Rescue Plan. That again was, I really, to have two U.S. senators recognizing that local government is, is a form of government that's closest to the people and really wanting to hear what our most pressing needs are, our most pressing concerns, and wanting to inform kind of the Treasury Department's guidance on how those dollars should be spent, was helpful and very meaningful. I also want to acknowledge the Rotary's Save a Child, Serve a Child event. My understanding is Counselor Seymour is being somewhat modest and had a pretty big hand in, in supporting that event and I want to thank him for it. It was impressive to honor a great man. It seemed a hard task to roast somebody with that level of humility, but they were able to pull it off. And then finally, the mayor and I attended Denver Regional Council of Government's Work I will tell you, this weekend, we had our strategic planning retreat and for those of us on council, it's really the Super Bowl. The strategic plan is what informs our budget, it's what informs our work plans, our capital plans. It really is how do we want to grow as a community, what our goals are. And I was nervous. We as a council had not really done that before. We hadn't been together in a year and I was really delighted to see the amount of alignment, to see the shared love of our community from my colleagues and to forge a path to go forward that makes sure that we still cherish the direction that we're in and that we're putting the community first. So I look forward as we get further in the process with that and it's going to be a little bit iterative, but I want to thank every single person for going into the room with their mind on Westminster and what's best for Westminster today and tomorrow.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to sound like a broken record here and thank staff and all who were involved in not only last year and getting us all online, but getting us back in person. That was a monumental effort and from the strat planning, I think that was our first trial run to, into today and so far, knocking on wood, we're all great. And so I just wanted to thank you from us to you, that you have done marvelous work, not only for us, but for our community. And then going into our strategic planning, it was my first one, first true strategic planning process and it was enlightening. It was, there was areas where we were pushing and pulling each other and I think that that's incredibly healthy for where we're, where we were trying to go and are trying to go. And so I just wanted to thank my colleagues for allowing that deeper conversation that we could have as a group and in person, which I felt, much to what you all have said, it lent to a greater and more meaningful discussion. I attended the CASA roast for Frank DeAngelis and again, thank you, Counselor Seymour, for the invitation for that. That was enlightening. I don't know, I had, have never met Mr. DeAngelis, but you know, just to see what he's done for our community and beyond has just greatly impacted those around him and for everyone involved. The other meeting I attended was CC4CA and they are currently working on the, and honing in their policy statements and wordsmithing at this point should have more of a finalized statement here. And I say statement, but there's 27 items in this statement, not just an item to, to touch on, but they, they're looking to finalize that in May. And then lastly, I just wanted to, last year, I was asked to provide a elevator speech for CASA as we were seeing declining numbers in volunteers and increasing numbers of kiddos in our system. So I just wanted to take a moment and read that elevator speech. "We are in a growing epidemic and no, not the COVID-19 virus, but an epidemic of youth in the foster care system. The reality is, Colorado alone has more than 13,000 children who have to walk through courtrooms with strangers with little to no representation and no family to support them. Today, I'm encouraging you to become a court-appointed special advocate. A CASA is a volunteer position that serves as a sworn officer of the court to advocate and be a voice for children who are victims of abuse and neglect. The position is not for the faint of heart. I don't want to alarm anybody, but the statistics show that if a child in the system has a CASA, they are more likely to find a safe, permanent home. They are more likely to succeed in school and they are half as likely to re-enter the system. There are almost half a million children in foster care across the nation. Only 40% of those kiddos are represented. Knowing I was making a difference by saving life and helping to break the cycle of poverty, drug abuse, and reliance on the system, these are the reasons why I joined the fight. My first case, I was assigned a one-and-a-half-year-old little girl. In her short life, she was born with drugs in her body, neglected, abused, and had lived with four foster care families. Her speech was delayed and she had trouble walking. Every time she would move to a new home, her tendency was to search for food in the trash can and hide it for fear she wouldn't eat again. That's how she knew how to survive. She would have tantrums and cry when I would leave after a home visit with her. It was hard to distinguish if it was just a toddler behavior or if it was a cry for help. After two years fighting on behalf of her cry for help, I helped to find her a forever home. Close your eyes and remember that time you helped someone and it made you feel good. Maybe you gave a monetary donation or gave blood, knowing you just saved three lives. Whatever it is, remember that feeling and intensify it by 100 times. And that's what you'll feel being a CASA. My CASA kiddo is now almost six years old and very proud to say my kiddo is now, now very loved, thriving in school, on a healthy diet, and running around with her older brothers and growing like crazy. And that's what you'll have an impact on, is our future." Thank you.
Thank you, council. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I'll ask the council at this time if there's anyone who has an item on the consent agenda that they wish to have removed. anyone who has an item on the consent agenda that they wish to have removed. Seeing none, we will move on to Item 8A, Consent Agenda. Air Force, same side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda, Items 8A through 8D.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of the consent agenda. Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote, if you will, please.
Mayor Aggison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
To the council, Item 8A through D is approved on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to Item Number Nine, Appointments and Resignations. We do have one appointment tonight. As you will recall, formerly, we had a gentleman by the name of Stephen Gay, who was here with us in our Public Works Utility Department, served on this board for a number of years. There are some very stringent requirements that you have to meet in order to serve on this board, one being the resident city of Westminster. But you also have to live in a specific geographical location for the Metro District. Tonight, I am proud to announce that Tammy Hitchens, our Director of Finance, has been volunteered, or has volunteered, I'm not sure, Mr. Trip, but we are asked to appoint her to the vacancy that's currently on the board of the state of Westminster. So at this time, Counselor Demott.
It is my honor to move to appoint Tammy Hitchens, Director of Finance, to the Metro Waste Water Reclamation District.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any objection to the appointment? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is also a roll call vote.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Aggison.
Yes. Thank you, Council. Ms. Hitchens, wherever you are, I know you're typically listening in tonight. Congratulations. It was a squeaky vote, but you had to volunteer anyway. Moving on to the next item, Public Hearings and Other New Businesses. Our first item on the agenda tonight is Council's Bill Number Eight. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number Eight on First Reading, Amending Sections 8-7-24, 8-7-25, and 8-12-16 of the Westminster Municipal Code relating to water shortage or drought and waste of water.
Counselor Vols.
I second the motion.
I have a motion, seconded and discussed by any member of council. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate some of the edits that have been made in this bill, especially a change from shell to may impose a fine, so I appreciate that flexibility in there, is a greatly appreciated update in that, and then some of the other wording. I do have a concern, though, is the installation of a flow-restrictor device. And so I understand that that was added as an alternative, and it is an and/or to shut off a water service, but I do have some deep concerns about that part of this bill. Thank you.
Do you have a specific question you want to respond to?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also had a concern, noted a concern with the restrictor, as Counselor Seymour had mentioned. Most edits seemed fine, except for that point. I do have also, and I don't know if it could be adjusted or made tonight, but I believe that if we put a timeline on our residents, there should be noted a timeline for staff, and so that for transparency and procedural purposes, I would like, if it's 30 days for residents, I would like at least a timeline for our staff in getting back to and making a decision on items that are brought up in here.
Mr. Trip.
Counselor Smith, let me have a chance to check with the staff and see what time, but I think that's very appropriate, what you've suggested, that we be consistent that way. So we'll check into that and give you a specific answer here in the next few days.
At this time, I'm not hearing any request for a change of the item, but the response that was provided by the city manager, is that acceptable, Counselor Smith? I'm not hearing that you want to actually change what's proposed, but you were accepting what was proposed by Mr. Trip, having staff look at that item.
Will that be able to come back to council, then? How would that work, to have it in writing?
City Attorney Frankel, what do you suggest we do with this item tonight? I feel confident that we can commit to some timeframe. I just want to, I really like a chance to talk to the folks involved in that procedure to make sure that I don't commit something that I can't, they can't deliver on tonight.
Mr. Frankel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Trip, to your question on procedure, tonight, the ordinance amendments are on first reading. If council votes to pass these on first reading, we could bring back proposed edits for second reading for council's consideration. That would not affect the publication that would have to happen in the newspaper between now and second reading, as publication is by title at this point. So the edit to the flow-restrictor devices and potential deadline for staff response, I believe, could be incorporated to the second reading. You could be given options by staff on those subjects.
I want to see your counsel.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Demott.
I was going to, if you table it, if there were objections, but if the objections are met by second, waiting till second reading, I won't suggest that.
Yeah, because right now, as the city attorney said, this is first reading, we have to have a second reading. And that gives time for staff to look at, to answer the question, and we can incorporate it as amendment during the second reading.
Makes sense, I guess. I just am hesitant, I follow the concerns, I'm hesitant to vote yes on first reading with those, without the changes being in there. So, I mean, I can vote that way, but that was the only reason I was wondering, if tabling it would have made sense.
Well, if you table it, we're going to go back to first reading again, we'll have to extend that period of time even further, instead of being able to direct it by the next reading.
And just to be clear, if I could, sorry to interrupt you both, but absolutely, that's also an option. If there's a preference on council to table this, have the discussion of the proposed edits, and then vote on a first reading at a later date, that's also an option.
Before I come back to Counselor Smith, Mr. Trip, is there any issue that if this were to be tabled? I'm trying to think of when, it would have to go back potentially to the next council meeting, as Addison, an example, if you could have, you think you can have what you need to answer, Counselor Smith, by the next council meeting?
Mayor, we won't bring it back until we've got that answer, first of all, and I think we can. Just looking at a note from Public Works Director, and he's agreeable to a time restriction. So I think that's going to come back with that change. I don't think there's going to be an issue there.
But that would be modified in time for us to have that proposed by the, if we're tabled, my question is, how dollar do I table it? Probably either get it to a date certain or to the next available council meeting.
Yeah, I think I'm going to go ahead and bring Public Works Director Kershbaum on. He's attentive to this here and responding to me. Max, would you come on and maybe you can answer a couple of questions here, and we can clear this up tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trip. I think the timeline recommended for a staff response is certainly reasonable, and we would be completely in agreement with that. In terms of timing, we are on schedule to come speak to you next Monday night as well during the study session, to give you just a bit of a status update on where drought conditions stand and what might be coming forth. So while we don't have a very specific urgency to make these changes to the municipal code, we certainly want to have them in place and functioning before, at such time as we would recommend to the city manager, any need for an advancement to stage one of a drought, if that should become necessary. So all we're trying to do is just kind of make sure that we're prepared for that potential eventuality.
All right, Max, let me try to answer Counselor Smith's question, is if we move forward with the pieces before us now, with an amendment to do that 30-day response that you're asking for, is that doable within, in that timeframe? We could amend it tonight and move it forward with the amended timeframe included in the motion.
Is that a question for me?
No, that's for Max. I'm trying to get your piece in there, if we can do it tonight, if we can. Did I lose him?
I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, are you speaking to me or to council? I'm not sure.
As far as, council has had a request to potentially change so that staff has a finite period of time to respond. That was the issue that's currently raised. What we were looking, if we amend the motion through a friendly amendment to include that timeline of, say, 30 days in there, in the motion tonight, so that we can move this item forward because of those issues that you described, is that 30 days sufficient time for you? And could you abide by that if we made that change tonight?
Yes, it's acceptable, for sure, in response by staff.
All right. That answered your issue.
Everybody else is coming?
Okay. Counselor Seymour, you're okay?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, too. If you don't mind, I have an amendment to what I, I don't want to get in the way of this, I have a comment on my discussion.
Okay. Let's try to deal with the first one. Counselor Smith, if we can get the 30-day timeline, does that answer your question?
Yeah, can we do 30 calendar days?
Anyway, 30 calendar days is fine, but I don't want to include just the necessary 30 days, 30 calendar days would be fine. So we will ask you to propose an amendment to the motion that was made by Counselor Scully and seconded by Counselor Vols, and if they're acceptable to the motion, then we'll amend that as we move forward. If you'd like to propose an amendment, this friendly amendment at this time, that would be helpful, then I'll come back to Counselor Seymour.
Okay, and I just say, I propose to amend 10A, moving, move to pass Counselors' Bill Number Eight on First Reading, amending Sections 8, 7, 24, 8, 7, 25, and 8, 12, 16 of the Westminster Municipal Code relating to water shortage or drought and waste water, waste of water.
What is the amendment?
I propose that the amendment state in this bill that staff has 30 calendar days to respond back to residents.
Okay. Counselor Smith, I'm sorry, Counselor Scully, are you acceptable of the friendly amendment?
I am.
Counselor Vols.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Frankel, I think we vote on this amendment first without the motion, and then we'll come back and see if we have another amendment from Counselor Seymour, am I correct?
Correct. Just so that we're clear, the nature of the amendment, the 30 days for staff to respond, as I look at the red line document that's in tonight's agenda, there are more, there's more than one reference to a 30-day deadline. Is the staff response deadline intended to be at a specific location within the document?
I believe it was in, you're right, it was in multiple locations, and I'd like to see it in those multiple locations.
Okay, so as I, I just want to be sure we bring back the correct document and have that ready for signature on first reading, should it pass tonight. The 30-day response would be incorporated at, I believe, Section 8, 7, 24C, the first place I see a 30-day reference. Now, referencing an appeal within 30 days of the notice. Second reference to 30 days that I'm seeing is at 8, 7, 25C, another notice of violation that may be appealed in writing within 30 days of the date of the notice. And the same language at 8, 12, 16, paragraph C, another appeal in writing within 30 days of the date the notice was issued. So in those, each of those three places where there's a reference to the 30 days to appeal, there should also be inserted language to the effect that staff will respond within 30 calendar days to that appeal. Is that the intent?
That's the intent, I believe.
Okay, so it'll be in three different locations. Thank you, that ours.
Yes.
So at this point, Ms. Parker, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call vote on the proposed friendly amendment, but you're still not moving forward.
I apologize, I have a question about the amendment.
Go ahead.
So my concern with the amendment, and I want to ask my colleagues, if this amendment will override their concerns with the bill as it is, or if they're also have a concern, if their concerns on the restrictor were overweight this accommodation, and they will still be voting no. Because I am fine with it as it is, and so I don't know if the amendment is necessary, period, if we're going to do this. I would like to understand if this is going to ease their concerns.
I think the one, if I've heard Counselor Seymour and Smith, the 30-day piece is one item, there may still be another waiting on the proposed amendment from Counselor Seymour.
And this is why I've asked my question.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, too, I wanted to clarify my thoughts on the restrictor, and I apologize to my colleagues, long weekend of stuff, but I want to restate the installation of a flow-restrictor device is a lesser punishment than what's currently in there, because the current only option would be a shut-off. And so rereading this again, and then proceeding down below, is, this lessens the blow of this, and it also has the may part of it in there, too. So it's not a requirement, and then that would be post-hearing also. So I'm going to withdraw my thoughts on that, so I do apologize for misreading that.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's what I wanted to understand before voting to agree to this amendment, I wanted to see if this was still not going to pass. So thank you.
All right, are there other comments? Counselor Smith, are you okay with what's being proposed now? Does that answer your question? Okay. Mr. Trip, did you have something else?
I do. I'm listening to this, and I'm thinking it would be in all of our best interest to go ahead and table this this evening, and hear whatever testimony you want to provide, and come back with a clean document. City Attorney Frankel, what's your opinion?
Having equity value and having a clean document to vote on, as long as, you know, we have two weeks to bring it back, and that won't provide or present any problems for our utility director.
Yeah, I've gotten their approval on that, so I think that's, I think that's the best way to do it. Give you a chance to read it, but whatever testimony you want to provide tonight, feedback for us will be appreciated, and we'll do what we can to try to accommodate this and get everybody's support if we can.
Okay. Based on that, then I will ask Counselor Smith, are you willing to withdraw your friendly amendment so that we can table this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to draw the answer, any objection from the second or the maker of the motion?
No.
Then I will move that we, based upon the discussion we've had tonight and requests of the city staff, as we move forward to table this item. Ms. Scully, would you go ahead, and Mr. Trip, I'm going to leave it to a future date and let you pick the date, not us try to prescribe it. Okay. Ms. Scully, if you would, just request for it to be tabled to a future date, to be uncertain.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Without prescribing a date.
I request that we table Bill Number Eight with First Reading, Amending Sections 8-7- dash seven dash 24, eight dash seven dash 25, and eight dash 12 dash 16 of the Westminster Municipal Code relating to water shortage or drought and waste of water.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a request for tabling, all those in favor. Can we do this without a roll call, Ms. Parker?
Um, I could give you a cleaner for the record if we went ahead and did a roll call.
All right, go ahead.
Mayor Protem Sights. Yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Acheson.
Yes.
And Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Okay, and item eight, Council Bill number eight is tabled for future reference. Next, moving to the next item, this is item B1. Counselor Demott.
I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest would be best served by ratifying its sole source purchase agreement with Ariel Clave LLC to purchase decontamination machines, the fire department, in a total amount not to exceed $77,025 through 2021, which includes a 5% contingency.
Counselor Scully.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second for item B1. Is there any questions or discussions from the council? Frankel, did you have something? Mr. Frankel? Okay.
Sorry, I don't.
Okay. There being no discussion items, Ms. Parker, item B1 is a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Acheson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
Moving on to item B2, Counselor Demott, second half.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill number nine on first reading, providing a supplemental appropriation of funds, the 2021 budget of the general fund.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
I have a motion and a second for Council's Bill number nine. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, in the second half, please.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Acheson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Motion passes on a seven oh vote. Moving on to the next item, adoption of resolution number five. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number five, terminating the order of the Westminster City Council requiring the wearing of face covering.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any comments or discussions by the city council? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be voting in favor of this tonight. I, I have, I just can't see us removing this order yet when we have two counties, and at any time, they can be on a different page, and I think it will be confusing to our residents. So I would just assume keep this ordinance in place for a little bit longer until we can truly move through this pandemic.
Mayor Protem.
So I have to say, I, I shared Counselor Scully's concerns when I saw this in our packet, particularly as of last Monday, Tri-County Health had not yet issued their most recent orders. I, I called city attorney David Frankel today to kind of walk through this proposal and where it came from, and why we thought it would be a good fit. And so what I understand is at this moment in time, the state, Jefferson County, and Tri-County Health are all in alignment, and our current rules are a bit of an outlier, which can cause some confusion for folks with compliance, right? And so the idea of having consistency and certainty, I think, was the goal of this. The goal of this was not to in any way indicate that we should not continue to be wearing masks or best practices, or that we should, it's time to let up on COVID, because as Counselor Scully mentioned, it's, it's still an issue. It's still with us, and in fact, I believe I overheard the mayor say this weekend at strategic planning, that in Adams County, I believe you said it doubled, the infection rates doubled over, or I'm sorry, those, that tested positive doubled. As it's written now, and, and understanding from our city attorney, that this really isn't removing any restrictions, it's making them more consistent, getting our rules consistent, and allowing the public health departments to kind of run point. When we, when we came up this, with this and implemented this, it was because there was inaction, and we as a city recognized the public health concerns and the need for us some action, some quick and decisive action. So I'm somewhat agnostic, I could go either way on this tonight. If it would make you comfortable to maybe even table it tonight, so you could have your questions answered, I'd be happy to do that as well. But I do like the idea of consistency, and I do know that we have the political will, if something were to change in Tri-County and Jefferson got out of alignment, that we as a council would be willing to step in and set a, a rule between the two counties. So I'm, I'm comfortable either way, I just wanted to explain to you, my colleague, where I was at with it, because I apologize, I didn't call you earlier to discuss this.
Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. The way that I understand this, and I've come back from a different angle, I think, because originally I voted against our mask mandate, not because I wasn't encouraging people to wear masks and be safe and follow rules at businesses, I just feel like it was a choice the business should make, individuals should make, whether or not they wanted to shop at those businesses, because that's how I see our society and our freedoms. I understand health concerns sometimes eclipse that, but I've always been consistent in that belief. But really where I was for the last, I'd say, couple of months, I've been pushing this direction, because I, not because of those beliefs, but because I want consistency with what the governor, which if I understand my colleagues back a year ago when we put this in place, it was, as Mayor Protem stated, it was very much because there was inaction at other levels that you guys, the council, believed, the majority of council believed, that we should put something in place and force that restriction or mandate. And I think there was members of the community on both sides asking for that, and some being more of the thinking that I have. But with that being said, we're, we're past that, and you know, the way I understood this and read this, this was exactly what I've been having for a while. We're consistent with what Governor Polis is doing, shouldn't we just be looking to Governor Polis like Tri-County and Jefferson County need to be doing? So to me, this just seems more like consistency and additional layers that we don't need that are confusing, which if you, if you go back to the original reason that we did this, we were having competing mandates from Tri-County, Jefferson County, and I recall actually the mayor really, and I did think that was a good point, even though I wasn't in favor of this, that it made sense to be consistent. So I see this more as staying in that same line of thought, where we're being consistent with the, the health experts upstream, if you will, and going along with this and saying we're going to look to the governor, who, if I understand correctly, just did extend it a whole nother month with the mask mandate. Thank you.
Counselor Vols.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, a little bit of a question, also in consistency. What if the governor, I guess this is really for our city attorney, maybe, what if the governor removes his restriction or his order, and Tri-County, I guess, can they, could we have a situation arise where we have Jeffco doing one thing, and Adams County doing, or Tri-County Health doing something else? Or will the governor's order supersede? Because I've had some residents, they, they seem like there's a patchwork of, you know, it's kind of been the way it's been. I don't want to see us where, you know, you cross over Sheridan, and it's kind of different there, and it's different, you know, it's, that's really hard for our businesses, and that's hard for people who are going to go to restaurants. And it seems like a really simple question, but can you answer that for me?
Glad to, Counselor Vols. So if I could, when, when this, Resolution 17A, the city's mask or face covering order went into effect on May 11th of last year, we had, at the time, no face covering orders in either county or from the state at that point. So the information that the city's decisions were based on was the best available information, and if you were to compare Resolution 17A with the current orders that are in effect, you'll see that Resolution 17A lacks a lot of the nuance, the detail, and the changes that have been incorporated into those three orders that are in effect from the other entities, based on evidence that they have been able to gather over the last 11 months. So right now, the state sets the floor, local health departments and cities also are free to go more restrictive if they choose to do so. And right now, the, the terms that the state has promulgated contemplate, you know, the mask mandate applying in public indoor spaces, and that there would not be a mask mandate out of doors. They also contemplate that the mask mandate applies to children that are above the age of 10. Our resolution, when it was first issued, hasn't changed in its ages three and up, was based on the information that was available at the time. Understand now, there may be a best practice that contemplates ages 11 and up essentially for the wearing of masks as a mandatory requirement. So with the state setting the floor, now both Jefferson County and Tri-County have adopted orders that address these same criteria, really regarding public indoor spaces, the ages of children who are required to wear it, the fact that they're not mandating out-of-door mask wearing, and there are a list of exceptions that are consistent with all three orders. So at, at this time, it appears there is coordination among the county health departments and the state. I don't.
Well, we haven't always seen that, though, right? I mean.
Correct. And, and the state's order absolutely could change, but the local health departments then, if, if they were more restrictive than the state, their orders survive that. So, so these terms would have to be, I suppose, changed by each of the local health departments under your hypothetical to really make a difference within our city. And I, I believe that it would absolutely be within city council's discretion to address that by enacting an appropriate face covering order of its own, should that be necessary. At this time, I don't see that as being necessary, because all three of those other orders are in alignment.
Well, thank you for that detailed answer, I appreciate that. And Counselor Demott just mentioned there was an extension of the, of the, what do we, mask-wearing mandate for another month. I thought it was done on the 16th. Is that, I mean, is, is there new information on that, or I, I guess I'm kind of not in the loop?
Yeah, the governor has taken its roommate.
Okay.
Right now, let me back up and bring us up to a little bit of date. So one of the things that was cast, asked in some of the comments is, where are we today? So in Jefferson County, in this morning's report, we were at 146.8 infection rate, a positivity rate of 5.3. In Adams, we were at 179.4 with a positivity rate of 7.7. We have seen numbers going back up greatly. As we reported with the two counties, I meet with the two county health departments every week, sometimes multiple times a week. The governor has indicated that he is going to rescind the COVID dial effective Friday of this week, or the state is pushing it down to the county health departments. That's one reading. Metro mayors has taken a position with all of our county, county health leaders, that we do not want a patchwork quilt of orders throughout the metro area.
Absolutely.
This will kill us in trying to do any kind of control or enforcement. We have an initial agreement verbally among the mayors that we're going to continue to push that. We also have had very frank conversations with Tri-County and Jefferson County Health for us. They do not want a patchwork. It's too hard to do anything with, and it's, as most of you have indicated, it's very confusing.
Yeah.
We do not know if either county, because of where they're at today, plans to use any level of a COVID dial after Friday. On the surface, it looks like they probably will not, because under the current order that's coming out on Friday, each county can move down one level. Last week, Jefferson County was mandated by the state to move back to yellow because of the infection numbers that they have not been able to get down for a period of five days. You would still be able to operate under your five-star program, that's still there. The mask order is intended by a conversation with both health departments through looking at least through the middle of May. They will evaluate it then again to see where we are on our infection rates, our numbers, and our positivity. But our hospitalizations on a metro-wide area are back up as well. So everything is in that, what the state says they believe we're in the fourth surge. Vaccinations are continuing, the number of people vaccinated is rising on a daily basis. Face coverings are still highly recommended by both health departments that drive our decisions. And as the city attorney said, if we found in the future that there's some reason to re-establish a mask order, we can do that. Our current one has more than just the mask order, even things where we're outside in the public settings.
Yeah.
Is still required under our current order, and the state has said that's not required. To leave it in would be much different than any other community in the metro area. Most people are following the health department and the state. We are seeing some improvements in some areas, but right now, over the last couple of weeks, we've seen an improvement going the wrong way. This is nationwide, we are in that surge. If there's anybody that watches this thing on the council much more than I do, please step up, because I would tell you, I spend a lot of time with this in multiple organizations trying to maintain the consistency of what's applied to our municipality. We're not the only city that has multiple health departments. Aurora has three different counties that they're a part of, Thornton, Westminster, Orvada, all have multiple health departments. But we are trying everything we can to make sure that what we do is consistent for all of our city, not just pieces of it. Counselor Scully, I fully understand your concern on the mask piece. The mask piece is not going away for a while. Both counties want to try to keep it at least till the middle of May and then evaluate it on a monthly basis. Can I tell you this is something that's not going to change? No, I can't do that. I can tell you, though, we want it consistent with whatever happens.
Okay.
We want to protect the people in our city, those who come through our city, but also everybody who's still not vaccinated as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Just so council's aware, the Tri-County order that's in effect now on face coverings goes through June, June 30th.
We are expecting that once the governor passes on, we're expecting a new health order out of both health departments to get inconsistent to how they're going to manage it. I'm very comfortable letting the one we have in the city go. For one thing, it's outdated, it's not in compliance with a lot of the things that we've had changed since March of last year, but we absolutely have the ability, and if it's necessary, with or without the support of the health departments, can put a mask order back in place for the majority-voted council.
Mayor, I appreciate that, thank you for, for that. That, and that makes me much more comfortable in, in voting in favor of this tonight. And also, thanks, you did make a point, thanks for your service. I know that you've, because I've been at a lot of them, and you do three or four or five times more than that, you're, you're in a lot of meetings on this, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Scully? I'm sorry, Counselor Smith, I had you up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the conversation, this kind of goes back to our strat plan, right, as far as the push and pull and having a deeper discussion on this, and I can appreciate where you're coming from, because you're not the only resident that feels that way. Going back to how we progressed through this, I mean, we've progressed in the education on the treatment and prevention, and then how to effectively socialize. I mean, we're kind of practicing what we've learned throughout this whole pandemic, is wearing masks and social distancing. And as the mayor said, the increase in vaccines on how many people are getting those is increasing, and I think one of the items for being cognizant of mask-wearing is that it's still important to maintain healthy lifestyles, but it, I think the vaccines and how the herd immunity is happening is also important to recognize. The, the only thing that I would, just from a communication standpoint... The only thing that I would, just from a communications standpoint, I believe in the consistency, and our order seems to be out of date, as already discussed. But I would caution if we would remove and then replace, because it sends a very troubling, confusing message to residents, as far, and goes back to kind of what we've all had angst with last year, is what are we doing? What are we not doing? What are we doing? What are we not doing? And so, that would be my only caution in that. I would be supportive of this tonight, but that would, again, lend back to my concern in the communication that we saw was a consistent theme with our residents through our strat plan.
Counselor Scully?
Well, listening to the testimony of the counselors, the mayor, Mayor Protem, and city attorney Frankel, it sounds like we'd actually be more consistent if we drop it, because it sounds like it's outdated. So, I would not be opposed to, if things change, putting another order in place. But I'm hopeful. We are seeing people vaccinate. We are seeing the herd immunity start to kick in, hopefully. And I will continue to wear my mask. So, I will go ahead and vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Any other comments or questions on this item? Ms. Parker, let's move to Resolution number five, please, real call.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Aggison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Resolution number five is terminated on a seven oh vote. Moving on to item ten D. Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize staff to apply for the Denver Regional Council of Government's Transportation Improvement Plan supplemental funding for multimodal improvements to West One Hundredth Avenue from Sim Street to Altaire.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Counselor Demott?
We just would like to thank staff for continuing to work on different creative ways to make sure that that area gets addressed. There's a lot of traffic things, as we've talked about before, and safety concerns on that stretch. So, I appreciate it.
Other comments? Counselor Seymour?
I, too, want to echo what my colleague mentioned. It's close to both of us, and it has, for a long time, been a dangerous intersection. So, I look for opportunities to provide greater safety and ease of transportation in that area.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, just wanted to thank the staff. We did our strategic plan this weekend, and through the environmental scan, traffic was of the priority for most of our residents. So, I appreciate this work on this government agreement, and I look forward to supporting it tonight.
I want to take a minute to thank the Jefferson County Subregional Transportation Group, because this is where the recommendation came to vote several weeks back, and we were able to garner unanimous support for our application, along with the fees that came from the city of Wheat Ridge. Due to the extra money we had that came into the county, we were able to spend it on three projects, one in Arvada, one in Wheat Ridge, and the one that we were talking about here in Westminster tonight. So, not only just our staff, but our partners here in the Jefferson County area that are part of that tip group, that they all supported our request and understood the importance of that traffic issue. So, we want to thank them for their support, and I expect that we will see this Wednesday night, I think, the next meeting where this is actually going to vote for the board. Any other comments? Ms. Parker, item ten D, please.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Aggison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Move ten D ahead as a seven oh vote. Moving on to item ten E. Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify cumulative purchases with North Metro Task Force, the amount of two hundred thousand ninety-six, six seventy-one, and sixty-seven cents for calendar year twenty twenty.
Counselor Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item ten E for the North Metro Task Force. Are there any comments or questions from council? Being done. Ms. Parker, ten E, please.
Mayor Aggison?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is item ten F. Mayor Protem Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement for water delivery between the city of Westminster and the city of Aurora, acting by and through its utility enterprise.
Counselor Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second for item ten F. Are there comments or questions from council?
I have a quick question. Just, is this because it is an IGA, that it's the mayor versus the city manager? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Being done. Ms. Parker?
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And Mayor Aggison?
Yes.
Thank you. Item ten F also moves forward on a seven oh vote. Moving on to item ten D. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a water-delivery agreement with Public Service Company of Colorado.
Counselor Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item ten D. Are there any comments or questions? Being done. Ms. Parker?
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Aggison?
Yes.
And Counselor Demott?
Yes.
The item ten G also moves forward on a seven oh vote. Next item on the agenda is item ten H. Trip, you and your staff have a report on the COVID update?
Thank you, Mayor. Max Kirschbaum, the head of our EOC LTR group, will provide a brief update for you this evening. Max?
Thank you, Mr. Trip. If I could, go ahead to the next slide, please. As the mayor indicated earlier, you see, once again, the arrows are pointing in the wrong direction. This data is as of Friday. You see Adams at one eighty-nine and Jefferson at one seventy-four cases per one hundred thousand over the seven-day period. And, once again, you see all the percent positivity rates pushing higher, with five percent being a good line of demarcation where the state would like to see activity below that five percent level. And as of Friday, the hospitalization rate was at four fifty-four. Looking at those numbers today, the mayor mentioned them, but I'll repeat them, since you can see, you can compare them to these Friday numbers. The positivity rate for the state stays about the same, at about five point five percent. Adams County, the number is at one eighty-one as of the end of today, so pretty similar to the Friday data. And Jefferson County is at one forty-three, which is a little bit less than their Friday data showed. And the hospitalization rate continues to climb. As of the end of today, it's at four seventy. So, it has climbed steadily from, if you look at the next slide, please, with the low point on March first at three hundred and twenty-five, we've climbed steadily from then till now over these last approximate six weeks, and that's about a forty percent increase in that number. To address a comment that I think Counselor Demott asked last week about looking at metro-area county hospitalization rates, I did spend some time investigating that question. You can't find it aggregated at the state level. You can, if you drill down in separate county by county, you can find similar data, but not necessarily the same data for ease of comparison. So, I think to answer your question, is it readily available? It's not readily available. But if you want to continue to look at it, say, just with our two counties, that appears possible, looking at the way Tri-County and Jefferson County show their data. But I had just been focusing mostly at the state level as that general indicator of where are we doing collectively, how are we doing collectively. But I can change that up if you'd like to go down that direction. And that's all I have for this evening.
One of the things I want to bring up is the event that we had on Saturday. Max, his team, Deputy Chief Burke, was very instrumental in helping us put together a vaccine day for our city employees and their families this past Saturday. And I want to thank North Suburban, especially for willing to step up and contacting us about that potential event. We are able to pull that off on Saturday. The last count I had, late Saturday afternoon, we had over four hundred people that had signed up from Westminster Employment Base and their families for that one day. So, we appreciate very much Health One stepping up and trying to help our families of our city. Any other comments or questions in regards to Max's report? Being done. Mr. Frankel?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. It was I that asked about that hospitalization. Appreciate you very much looking into that, and that was the key, if it's readily available. But to spend time on that is not necessary, but I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
I said, sorry, I thought it was Counselor Demott. My apology.
Usually ask the smart questions, so.
That's all I was going to say, is you smart question. You're confused. Before it gets too deep up here at the dais, I have to take my boots off. Mr. Frankel, can you move us on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next agenda item is for the Westminster Economic Development Authority, and there is a proposed executive session for WEDA to discuss the proposed amended and restated for-sale development agreement with Downtown Westminster Residences LLC for Block A four West, Block A four East, Block C seven, and Block A one in Downtown Westminster, and to provide direction to the authority's negotiators, as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code one eleven-three, C two and four, as well as Colorado revised statute twenty-four-six, four oh-two, four A and E one.
As defined by the city attorney, we've had a request as the Economic Development Authority Board to go into an executive session. This time, I will poll each member of the council to see if they're prepared to go into the session. And also remind that if the decision is made to go into executive session, we will be in that session. Once it's ended, we will come back and reconvene as the Westminster Economic Development Authority Board in public meeting. But we will be out of the limelight for a little while while that's going on. Let me start with Counselor Vols?
Yes, I'm ready. And then, can we also get a break between, before we go to the executive session? Thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes, I'm prepared.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
And the mayor as well. It is now eight fifty-seven. Staff has said that they need about ten minutes in order to make the conversion from our public meeting to executive session. We will reconvene, let's just say, nine, ten, tonight. So, at this time, the business of the Westminster City Council is done. We will reconvene as the Westminster Economic Development Authority at nine, ten, in the executive session. For the public, we thank you for attending tonight. We will be back after the executive session if you wish to hold on. Thank you. We are in recess. We are in recess.
All right, everybody. Just a quick reminder, you're moving back to your mics on the dais. We are currently live until we reconvene. Quick reminder to make sure that your machine is on mute. We're getting a little bit of feedback. If you would just take a second to make sure that your machine in front of you has been muted. Thank you.
So, you ready?
Okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back live. It is now 10:15. We are reconvening in public as the Westminster Economic Development Authority Board. At this time, we will stand with a roll call from our previous meeting. I will open up the floor and ask for approval of the minutes of the March 22nd meeting. Board Member Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the March 22nd, 2021 meeting as presented.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
Motion in a second for approval of the minutes of the March 22nd meeting. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
By aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Moving on to the business of the WEDA Board for tonight. Moving on to item 3A. This is resolution number 213. Your pro temp, or I'm sorry, Vice Chair Sights?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 213 authorizing the executive director to execute a purchase and sale agreement for Lot 1, Block A4 in downtown Westminster with Downtown Westminster Residences LLC in substantially the same form as presented.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions from any member of the authority? Hearing none, Ms. Parkins. Roll call vote for adoption of resolution number 213.
Chairperson Ajison.
Yes.
Board Member Demott.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights?
Yes.
Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
Board Member Scully?
Yes.
Board Member Smith?
Yes.
And Board Member Vols?
Yes.
Board, that passes resolution number 213 on a 7-0 vote. Moving to the next item on the agenda. Item 3B, this is adoption of resolution 214. Board Member Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 214 authorizing the Chair of the Westminster Economic Development Authority to execute a redevelopment and reimbursement agreement with the Boulder Creek 128 and Huron LLC for the use of North Huron Urban Renewal Area Funds for the proposed development at the northwest corner of West 128th Avenue and Huron Street.
Mr. Seymour?
Second.
Motion in a second. Are there comments or questions from the authority? Hearing none, Ms. Parker, you will have to delay the count for at least 12 minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't hear you. Okay, thanks.
I didn't want to get out before 12:30.
We're gonna make it. Board Member Demott?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights?
Yes.
Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
Board Member Scully?
Yes.
Board Member Vols?
Yes.
And Chairperson Ajison?
Yes. Thank you, Board. That passes resolution number 214 on a 7-0 vote, and that concludes the business of the Development Authority for tonight. We are adjourned.